Good evening and welcome to the April 3, 2024 Yarmouth Planning Board Meeting. I'm Joanne Crowley, I'm the Chair. This is to formally advise that as required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Paragraphs 18 to 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations signed into law on June 16, 2021, the Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public hearing, public meeting, on April 3, 2024. At 5:30 PM, the public is welcome to attend in person this evening or via alternate public access provided in the notice of meeting that was available on the town website. I'll begin the meeting by calling roll call. Susan Britta.
Here.
Will Rubenstein. Jim Saban. Peter Slovac.
Here.
Ken Smith.
Here.
Chris Vincent. Joanne Crowley, present. And I'd like you all to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance now that we have a quorum. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. This evening, we have one item on our agenda primarily, and it's with regard to our local comprehensive plan. I'd like to welcome BCS Group, our consultants on this. They have a terrific presentation they're going to go through for us this evening. And we'll get to meet, the public will get to meet them and learn about the purpose of the LPC and the components that they are going to help us with. They are assisting us in a major way, but many components of the local comprehensive plan are already in the works. Some, as you know, like the Vision Plan, are completed. I'd like to start, even though we just did roll call, by introducing the members who are here. We have Ken Smith, Peter Slovac, myself, Joanne Crowley, and Susan Britta, who are here. We are expecting Will Rubenstein to join us this evening as well. But before we begin, let me start by just answering a couple of questions that some of you may have. Why is it important to do this? Why do we prepare a local comprehensive plan? It's through the LCP that Yarmouth defines its vision, which we have done, for how to plan for growth and change and protect our shared resources. You know, Yarmouth doesn't sit alone. We share our resources with other towns on the Cape and Barcible County. In addition to the vision that we've already articulated, we'll be developing a growth policy. And the LCP is a source of information about existing and expected conditions within Yarmouth that will certainly change over time as the values and expectations of the community evolve. Preparing an LCP is, helps us ensure that we'll be able to respond to these changing needs in a sustainable manner. It can also serve as a guide and resource for elected officials, board members like ourselves and others, and the community for making resource decisions on how the town elects each year to spend its resources. This evening, our consultants are going to run through what are the components of a plan. I'll remind you just briefly that it includes a vision statement. We can check that box. We have a really good one, I think. We have an evaluation of some existing conditions, others we need to look at. It will, it will contain goals for growth in the, in the, in the town of Yarmouth. It will include a capital facilities plan, which we also have in the works. It's going to town meeting. That is very comprehensive. It will include a housing plan, a housing production plan, which we have already, probably 99% there, right Kath, I think? And then, in the end, it will have a targeted action plan on things that the town members and the community have expressed as their most important things that they would like the town to do in the future. And so with that, our experts here, our consultants, are going to run through some of the components of this. And I welcome you. If we could start with introductions, so the public might know. We'll let you run with it. And then Kathy's going to jump in and out. I'd like to, if I, if we could, just in terms of organization of the meeting, I'd like you to go through the PowerPoint, and then we'll pause and see if Planning Board members have any comments or questions, as well as the public. And then we'll run through and we'll go through your public engagement plan. If that works for you, that's great. Okay. It's all yours.
Okay. Thank you. So my name is Heather Gould. I'm the project manager for this project, and I'm the Director of Planning at the BSC Group. I am joined by Jeff Fasser and Olivia Knightley. And we'll go into a little bit more detail in a couple of slides about their roles in our, our project team. So the way the slides are formatted, we have our company profile, our project team. Kathy's going to say a few words on Yarmouth's Vision Plan, and then we'll go into a deeper dive on what is the local comprehensive plan? Why is it important? What is the update process and how we're going to go about it? Our project approach, our community engagement strategy, and a project timeline. About BSC Group, so we are an engineering firm, but we are multidisciplinary. So we have several different services that we offer, including planning and design. And that's where our group falls into the, the category here. We have done master planning processes throughout the state. We have an office down the Cape. We have an office in Central Mass. We have an office in Boston. We have an office in Connecticut, and we have an office in Andover. So we're, we're all over the place, and we work in many municipalities, varying sizes, with similar and different kind of issues within the community. In terms of our project team, Jeff is our principal on the project. He has experience in landscape architecture and planning, and he brings really his, his, his specialties really are in looking at problems and trying to come up with creative ways to solve them, really working with community members and hearing what they have to say. Olivia here is our public engagement specialist. She will speak on our public engagement plan and our approach and the way that we handle our public engagement. And we have a team that we've built surrounding our various disciplines. So we have several planners that we have at the table here. We have transportation experts. We have someone who is focused on equity and environmental justice. We have GIS technicians who will be helping us with mapping and helping us to tell stories through maps. We have our civil engineering and our ecological services and our climate resiliency planners and engineers, all available to help as well.
If I could just interrupt for one second. I'd like to just make a note that Will Rubenstein has arrived.
I'm late.
In terms of our, our team here, this is our core team of planners up on the screen. And one person that has recently joined our firm, Jeff Bag, he comes from East Hampton, and he has so many ideas related to master planning and comprehensive planning and looking at a regional effort. And so we're excited to bring him as part of our team as well, joining Jeff, Olivia, another planner of ours, Aksa, and really kind of helping to form that core team that we have available.
If I could just interrupt for one second, Heather. I just want to let the public know that Kathy and I were involved in interviews for several consultants who came before us. And I have, in my personal opinion, I think Kathy would join me. This team that BCS has put together is a really, really good team, and we're looking forward to working with them. They have an exceptional background in a whole host of areas, and they had a great presentation to us at the time of the evaluation. So we're really looking forward to the work you can help us with. So thank you. It's a good team.
I'm going to turn it over to Kathy.
Sure. As Joanne mentioned, we're not starting from ground zero. We have a lot of building blocks already in place. The biggest one is the Vision Plan that we accomplished in 2021. We really had an overarching goal of making Yarmouth a great place to live, work, play, and learn. We want to make sure that we have a nice, attractive, affordable place to live, and we have an inclusive community. We also want to be sure that we have a nice, clean, healthy environment in our drinking water and in our water resources. We also want to have a strong economy, want to have a lot, a lot of different types of jobs and job opportunities for people and different types of businesses. We also want to have a great number of places to have fun and leisure and get together and socialize with, with each other. And then, of course, educational excellence. One of the things that we did with the overarching vision was then take a look at some general goals that we might be able to implement to reach our visions. And different ways we looked at it was, what are the things in our community that we wanted to preserve, promote, and provide for? And if, nobody picked up a copy, there's a copy of the Vision Plan right here on the table for everyone to pick up. So obviously, some of the things here on the right that you can see that are important to us is obviously our environment. We want to deal with our water resources, our wildlife habitat and our open spaces. We want to look at our community character. We want to be sure that it's not just about having a nice-looking community that we live in, but what's the feel of our community? How do we be inclusive with other, with other groups? How do we have different community events that kind of draw us all together? What kind of clubs and socialization do we have? Housing, as we all know, housing is very difficult right now. So we want to be sure that we have quality housing and housing services for our community. We also want to be sure that we have exemplary town services, make sure there's proper health and safety in our community. We have a very strong fire and police department that are kind of beloved in town, which is, which is good. And then also having, making sure that we have well-maintained facilities and infrastructure in our community. With regard to seniors and age-friendly services, we obviously have an older demographic, so we want to make sure that we have a robust services and facilities for seniors and active seniors in our community. And then climate resilient, resiliency and climate change. We all know it's kind of coming, so what can we do to preserve our ecosystems and protect them? And what type of mitigation planning and emergency planning can we do for those upcoming events? We also want to have a good place to work, so one of the big things, obviously, is our economy. We want to expand our year-round economy. We want to expand the number and types of jobs that we have. We want to maintain our great, robust tourism, but we want to see what other jobs that we can, can also bring to our community. We also want to be sure that we're business-friendly, so we're promoting people, businesses know that we want them here and what we can do to keep them here. And we also want to be sure that we're developing in locations that are environmentally safe, not doing any damage, and also are supported by our, by our infrastructure. So connectivity and mobility, how are we getting around in town? You know, we want to be sure that we have a lot of different types of multimodal transportation. We want to make sure we have sidewalks and connectivity with our sidewalks, shared-use pathways for bikes, as well as roads, and then public transportation, so people can get around. Of course, recreation, I think that's one of the great reasons we all live here, is the great recreational opportunities that we have here, both passive and active, and the different types of entertainment we might be able to expand upon. Obviously, education and learning is an important component of any community. We want to make sure that we have excellence in education for all ages, not just for, for young people, but also for, for everyone in our community. And then our libraries, we really want to reassure that we have modern libraries, and they really have a lot of programming and activities, again, for everyone of all ages. The Library Planning Committee just gave a nice presentation to the Board of Selectmen, excuse me, the Select Board, last week. If anyone wants to tune in, and they do have two articles that are going to be on the annual town meeting to help fund some additional design and planning processes that they need to go through. So another big component, building block for the LCP is our Open Space and Recreation Plan. And that's another thing that's 99% complete. We had an Open Space Recreation Plan ad hoc committee. Will, Will was our able chair, and we're very close to completing that. But that's also going to be the basis for a lot of sections of the LCP with regard to water resources, wetland resources, wildlife and plant habitat, and our open space and recreation. So we can build very easily, incorporate those components into the LCP. We are going to be going and presenting the final draft to the Board of Selectmen next Tuesday on the 9th, if any of you want to, want to tune into that. Hopefully, we'll get their input and their support, and we'll submit that to the Division of Conservation Services for their final approval. So again, extremely close to being done. As Joanne mentioned, also, the housing production plan is also in that 99% done. There was a couple edits that needed to be made based on comments from the Select Board and the planning, and the Planning Board before it can be submitted to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities for, for their approval. There's a couple other things that aren't mentioned here, but are kind of in the works. Joanne did mention, you know, the Capital Infrastructure and Facilities Plan. We have a lot of great work that's been done by our capital budget with the assistance of Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator, Bill Scott. So we're in a really good position to have that component of the LCB, LCP prepared. And then also to kind of facilitate and run parallel with the work that we're doing here, we also have funding for two economic studies that we're doing. One of them is for marketing from the Tourism Revenue Preservation Funds, to kind of look at what type of businesses do we want to draw to, to town? What are our needs in town? And then what can we do about trying to draw them to, to us? So what are the strategies that we could implement? And then we also have a Community Planning Grant that's supplemented with funding from the Affordable Housing Trust, and it's really looking at strategies to promote mixed use, so we can kind of grow our businesses, but also provide the housing needed in order to have employees and, and services here in our community. And we're also going to take a look at our Village Center Overlay District, which is a mixed-use zoning that we have in town, see if there's any things that we need to do to make that more usable, and also maybe looking at some Chapter 40, our smart growth opportunities, which is another way of, of doing mixed growth, or mixed use, excuse me. And then also looking to see if there's other successful mixed-use projects throughout the community that we might be able to, to learn some things from. So those are a couple economic studies that are going to be done parallel that will ultimately get incorporated into the LCP. So we got lots of work done already. Lots of work to do, but we got lots of work done.
Okay. So jumping into the nitty-gritty of what is a local comprehensive plan and why is it important? As outlined in the Yarmouth Vision Plan, we're building around diverse subjects, natural systems, built systems, community systems, and just the Vision Plan in general. However, there are certain elements of a local comprehensive plan that are required within a master plan process. And those are related to many of the components that Kathy talked about. Housing, land use, zoning, historic and cultural resources, open space and recreation, economic development. Climate resiliency is a newer element that has been incorporated in a lot of these community master plans. And transportation, public facilities and services as well. And within this document, along with the vision statement, is also goals and objectives and a timeline for implementation. So looking at strategies to achieve the goals that are outlined in this plan over a certain long-term period of time. So having short-term priorities, midterm priorities, and longer-term priorities, you know, the immediate, within the next couple of years, looking out five years, looking out 10 years. So that is the structure of how this plan is going to be and how we're going to approach filling in that information, looking at existing conditions, looking at projected conditions in the future, looking at all of the different plans and really digging into them and using them as the base for how we structure this document moving forward, because there's been so much good work done already, and there's even more planned on the way. In looking at that, we have looked at preserving, promoting, and providing for future needs, and having public participation and public engagement as a critical component to the development of this plan. Working with the town and the Planning Board, but also with the community overall, and coordinating with the Cape Cod Commission in terms of their regional policies and, you know, planning for future growth. So as I talked about a little bit, our project approach really is to do a deep dive into the relevant information and plans and data. And, you know, it's, I know it's small text on here, but there's a lot of plans that we have been able to pull and review, and I'm sure there is some that we're missing as well. But also, looking at developing that public engagement plan early and really having a strong foundation for moving forward with that. Establishing an online presence, so using ArcGIS as a tool for a project website, as well as looking at mapping through ArcGIS and having an online platform for people to go and, and use tools that we have available to provide input as an additional way to supplement any kind of in-person or virtual types of engagement. Creating some digital content and maps, infographics, imagery, really to help people understand what are the issues, what are the concerns, how can we identify them, what are we missing? And, and really help tell a story versus having a map that has all kinds of information on it, but you're looking at it and you're still not quite getting what it's trying to say. We're trying to have it really be clear and concise and helpful. And then really preparing those plan elements based on everything that's happened today and the public engagement we've heard. Keeping an open communication with the town and the boards and commissions and major stakeholders, the community, Cape Cod Commission, and the like. And I'm going to turn it over to Olivia now.
Do they want to take a break or go right into this? When did you want to take a break, Joanne?
I'm after the PowerPoint. Yeah.
So I'm just going to speak to the public engagement a little bit. And from our experience, we really want to make sure that we're meeting people where they're at. I think especially after the pandemic, we're seeing a little bit of less engagement from folks. People are very busy, and their time is very important, so we want to make sure that we're giving them multiple opportunities and avenues to provide feedback. So that can include in-person, hybrid, or just specifically online platforms. So just having a lot of different opportunities for people to have a voice in the master plan. Any translation of public engagement materials as we see fit can be, can be done. I know there's a large Portuguese-speaking population in the community, so when we need to translate documents, that's something that we can keep on the website, as well as any other important things that need to be translated. You guys have done an extensive amount of work already with the Vision Plan, your open space plan, housing production, so we want to make sure that we're pulling those into the public engagement process, so people can stay informed and also up to date on the work that's occurring simultaneously and that has come before. And then for a project identity, I think the Vision Plan, you know, branding and colors are great, so maybe pulling that into the comprehensive plan to give it an identity so that people can recognize what the initiative is and really have that quick recognition of, of the plan. And then storytelling through maps and infographics and imagery. I think that graphics are very compelling, and they can provide a lot of information to folks in a very quick and efficient way. So being very strategic with those visuals and, you know, handing them out, putting them on the website, this can really allow people to stay involved and participate in a way that is maybe more visual as well. For the project website, like Heather mentioned, we're going to be using the ArcGIS applications. And so for a lot of our public engagement materials, we're going to be using their softwares, which are all very similar in interface, very easy to use and very simple to work with. So I think folks will have a very easy time trying to navigate those websites. And once they, you know, find their way onto the project website, they will be very familiar with the applications and will have no problem using the Crowdsource Reporter, which is a geospatial mapping tool where folks can log on and they can map areas that they maybe have concerns about or specific interests, and they can post comments. This can be specific to individual master plan topics. So if someone has a comment about transportation, they can map that on, on the website. And then folks can also upvote other people's comments. So if there's something that they see that they really like or that resonates with them, they can upvote it. So that's a way to kind of build consensus around certain ideas and topics. And then the story, the hub is the website platform to actually build the page, and then the story map. This could be like a final piece where we can create a very streamlined page that hosts maybe an executive summary of the master plan or specific elements that we want to highlight towards the end of the comprehensive plan update. So this is a very, you know, streamlined interface where folks can just scroll through, and we can tell a very compelling and, and simple story and provide explanation and links to resources on there as well. On the website, we also want to showcase previous efforts, so any prior planning efforts to date that we think are really important to link, we can keep those in one location and, you know, provide a breakdown of the topic or specific focus area. So if folks are really interested in one specific topic, they can navigate to that on the website. And all of the resources will be in one place, which is really helpful. And then also providing links to meeting videos and, and surveys and any other materials that we want folks to have easy access to. For the community feedback portion, we kind of estimated around three public forums, which could take the form of an open house or smaller facilitated group discussions. You know, we want to conduct stakeholder interviews and maybe, you know, speak with some of the municipal officials and folks in town who have, you know, really informed perspectives on some of these issues, because, you know, you guys are the experts of, of the community, so we want to get your feedback as well. Utilizing social media and digital marketing, since a lot of people are on, you know, Instagram and Facebook now, it's just really easy to reach people that way, as well as print material, infographics, and that, that branding identity that we can build. And then, you know, showing up to special events and tabling. I know you guys have a couple, like farmers' markets or, or seasonal events, so those are really important to reach people that may be out in the public and get their attention that way. As far as infographics go, we, you know, can create any type of visual that we think might be needed. The example on the left, sorry, it's very small, but that is from an open space and recreation plan, and it's a very informative infographic that kind of gives a overview of the community and the recreation spaces. So just creating something that's informative and visual and, and compelling for, for folks to look at. And the example on the right is just a economic overview of another community that was used at a public forum to give a snapshot. So just, you know, creating nice visuals that can tell people a lot with not a ton of, of effort.
And now we're into the good stuff, the project timeline. We are in year one of this process, and this is really the first steps of setting that foundation to have a smooth process moving forward. So the public engagement plan and that development, looking at the existing data and existing conditions, and reviewing all of that, and coming up with a public process and engaging with the Cape Cod Commission at the start. And then we move forward with the plan elements and public engagement, looking at the first real public engagement effort to happen after the summer, knowing that summers are very busy for people and it's a high time for tourists to be in the area. People go on vacations. It's a lot harder to reach people then, so looking at September is really being that, that timeline for our first effort, which will involve looking at the vision statement and growth policy, community goals, all of the different plan elements that we're going to incorporate in. Once we do that public engagement, we will then be working on the draft sections of the report, and we will come back with what we have to the community at that time, which is at the beginning of next year. So in, in January, after the holidays, we will be a lot of the way through the plan, but not quite there yet. And then looking at having a first full draft by May 2025. So we'll have kind of the outline and the elements by January and really start to refine those moving forward from there. And then we have a timeline to go before the Planning Board in, I want to say, you know, mid-next year, and have that final draft to town meeting by next October. So it is, it seems like it's a long time from start to finish, but there is a whole lot of work that has to be done in the meantime, and trying to be mindful of when we're going to reach the most people in the community surrounding our public engagement and our approach to that, and also trying to make sure that we have a very strong public engagement plan so that we can keep that momentum going and people stay engaged, and they don't just say, oh, well, I contributed to that, you know, months ago, and I never heard anything after that, and I don't know where it stands. We want to make sure people are informed and engaged all the way along. And then wrapping up, by the end of next year... and engaged all the way along. And then wrapping up, by the end of next year, December 2025, through all of the approval processes, you know, Cape Cod Commission at that point. So that is our presentation.
Great. Thank you very much, Heather. Joanne?
Yes.
I don't know whether it would make sense to go through the public engagement plan now because you hit on so many great things, and this just gives a little bit more detail. I'd hate for people to start asking questions on that when they would be answered with the other presentations. So maybe we should go ahead.
Sure.
So this document is really, like I said, our foundation, our guide moving forward in terms of how we will approach the community engagement and our methods for doing so. You know, we start with the project website. We have that skeleton built. We are working to populate that. And we will have that for review for the town, and then we will be able to make that public and create some materials surrounding that and it being available for people to look at and engage with. With our public forums that we have, we will be organizing and facilitating and kind of gathering information and feedback. And then we will summarize all of our efforts, and that will be included in the plan. We usually like to include those at the backend of documents as attachments or appendices and reference, you know, smaller kind of summary overall of the effort that, you know, the feedback that we received and all of that. We'd like to make our master plan documents as comprehensive as possible, but we also want to be mindful of who is reading it and how long they're going to have an attention span to read it. So we have worked on various ways to kind of group certain information in certain sections, an executive summary, a story map, having all of the public engagement come at the end if people really want to dig into that, having all of the existing conditions in one kind of subsection of the document, having the implementation and the action plan as its own kind of standalone document. So people don't have to look at all of the hundreds of pages that may come out of the process, but they have that opportunity to kind of dig into the one section that may be of interest to them. Using a project logo and creating that identity and really keeping with that so people have that recognition, reaching out to the small group stakeholders, whether they're department heads or different boards and commissions, or a major business owner in town who has a lot of involvement in certain community events, getting people's takes. The institutional knowledge and background and history is critically important to really shaping the plan. And then just really just doing what we can to help and provide our feedback and our thoughts and kind of have this working relationship with the town and with the community and come together with a plan that really works at the end of the day in shaping that vision and creating that framework moving forward. We like to offer multiple opportunities to provide feedback, as we've mentioned before, in-person, hybrid, online, any and every way that we can to really get the word out and make sure that we're reaching representative populations within the community, and sparking a creative process by storytelling. So, you know, trying to create infographics and images that resonate with people and that they're able to look at and say, oh, I never thought of it that way. How about we do this? Or, you know, could we do this? And then that generates some energy between different community members and overall just helps to make the plan more solid. So in terms of our deliverables, you know, we have this project website, we have our crowdsourced map, we'll have a story map, flyers, infographics, marketing materials, media posts, press releases we can help with, emails, newsletters. There's all different ways to reach out to the community. But at the end of the day, you know, it's all about being in the community and involved in the community and present. And so that is why we think it's really important to be in-person for meetings and, you know, be present at community events as well. So I think that really captures the extent of the public engagement plan as we have it laid out.
So I'd like to first ask any planning board members for any comments or questions, and then we'll invite the public to join in. Ms. Britta?
You mentioned on page four, the Cape Cod region, the Cape Cod Commission's regional policy. Could you elaborate on that a little bit? What is, how does that relate? What is it and how does it relate to our plan? What does that mean?
So there is a, there is a regional process that the Cape Cod Commission has set on their website about how there are certain elements of the local comprehensive planning process that need to take into consideration certain things. And so we, it's, it's not the Cape Cod Commission saying, like, you don't have this, you can't have your plan approved. It's more working and keeping in mind that it's a regional approach. They're the regional planning commission for the Cape Cod area.
Okay.
So making sure that what we have in there is consistent with what the regional goals and policies are is the most important part of that.
And they get to approve it? The Cape Cod Commission approves it? Does that become part of a larger, does then go to the state, or does it just stay, just stays with the Cape Cod Commission?
It stays with the Cape Cod Commission.
Okay.
Any other board member questions or concerns, questions, comments? I would, just in support of your answer and Susan's question, at the end of our meeting packet, the last couple of pages in our meeting packet, the regional policy plan, goals, and objectives are attached for reference as to how they would like us to look at this. They do like a consistent look by each town that casts a kind of check off. You've organized your plan and your goals with regard to certain systems and certain goals that they have for the region. So just as a reference document, that's what will be guiding you and guiding us as we go through this, if I understand the process, Heather. You're nodding your head, which is good. It means I'm sort of got it. I sort of got it?
I just had one other comment.
Sure.
As we, as you work through this, I'm really interested, it sort of blends with the whole issue of housing. I'm interested in economic opportunities, particularly for Yarmouth. It came up repeatedly. I think you'll hear it when you start talking to people. You'll hear a lot of what you read in the vision statement. They're going to feed back to you with what they expect, what they want to see happen in the town. I think one of the reasons that we have a housing crisis is we have an economic, not just in Yarmouth, but I think across the Cape. We do not have a robust economic base on the Cape. It is a tourist-based economy. It's tied to, you know, June, July, and August. What is the, not only the town, what is the Cape doing to expand that economic base? Or do we just embrace wholeheartedly tourism as our economic engine and develop everything and make it high-end, make it fully comprehensive, like, you know, Vegas on the East Coast? I mean, just make it, do we go all out or do we try to diversify? Because it's a Cape-wide problem. And I think it's tied, when we heard a lot about the housing, people can't afford housing because they don't have jobs that allow them to afford housing. And it is, I think they go hand in glove. So I would like to see a lot of interest and discussion and sort of questioning about what people think should be done to expand the economic base, not only in Yarmouth, but across the Cape, because it cobwebs with so many other things that we're, they were looking at. And I think it was very obvious when we did the housing study and housing review that, yeah, people can't afford housing on the Cape because they don't have jobs that allow them to afford it. So anyway, that was just something I think that we ought to, long-term, what are we going to do about the economic base on the Cape? Not just in Yarmouth, but on the Cape. Are we going to be all in and just embrace tourism as the engine that drives the Cape and everything we do revolves around tourism? Or are we going really try to diversify the Cape? And what do we need to do to diversify the economic base on the Cape? What do we need to do to get, anyway, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members or comments or questions? Okay. I'd like to invite the public, if anyone has a question or a comment. We have some members of the public here. Anyone? If you could identify yourself, name and address.
Sure. My name's Ken Maguire. I'm at Cochese Path in West Yarmouth. Just a couple of clarification questions. I couldn't see some of the stuff on the slide. I challenged for some of the stuff. So the timeframe for this whole project, this study, is it two years?
Yep. The timeframe is from, you know, now until the end of December of 2025.
Twenty twenty-five, okay. So and just questions following up kind of what Susan was asking with the Cape Cod Commission. So does this plan, is it required to kind of follow what the Cape Cod Commission goals have set out to be for the region?
Yes, but, I mean, I think there is, there is that understanding that every community has different goals. It's a regional planning commission with the region's best interests in mind. So as long as what is in the plan is consistent with that and helps to further those regional goals and efforts, I think that's where it comes in, knowing that there are probably more specific actions that are very community-specific that will be in the plan that wouldn't necessarily be addressed within what the regional policy is.
Okay. So my only concern with that would be some other group has stated what they felt is his priority one, two, three, four for their goals. You know, if ours are not in that same priority, how is that addressed? You know, are we going to be able to focus on what we want? Are we going to have to bend to what, you know, they've said is critical?
Maybe, Heather, if I could jump in. I think if you look at the regional policy plan goals, they're very generic.
Okay.
I don't think any of us are going to say that we don't want to maintain high-quality drinking water. Those are the types of goals that they have. So
Attaining that could be town-specific.
That's all on how the town of Yarmouth and our residents.
A region or townships.
Right.
I'm sure we all have similarities in everything we're trying to achieve, but I could see the town of Yarmouth, you know, isn't Dennis, it's not Barnstable, you know, we're at different levels of different pieces of that. So our priorities could be different than theirs. That was my only concern was, you know, are we going to be able to do what we prioritize or the board prioritizes as number one, number two, number three? Because that means my tax dollars and everyone else's are going to be focused on those things, I would assume. So regionally, I'm assuming then what other towns have said is their priorities to meet these goals, because all the other towns are doing the same thing, correct?
All the towns, if they want to have a certified local comprehensive plan by the Cape Cod Commission, have to address the regional policy plan in some fashion. So you need to, you need to talk to those particular topics in there. I think the commission is very cognizant of the fact that we are all individual communities and we have different ways of going about things, and they want to see that. Maybe, maybe we come up with a great idea that another community says, hey, wait a minute, that really worked very well in Yarmouth. Maybe we'll do that here.
Okay. That was, that was kind of it. It's like, why don't we leverage what other towns have done, you know, and vice versa, right? I mean, we do want to share as much as hopefully they want to share.
Right.
But great. That was the only questions I had. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Christine Greeley from Glenwood Street, also the Hyannis Park Civic Association. I had a couple of questions. One is, is there a, going to be a paper copy of some sort of the presentation tonight? Because I think, as he said, it's very hard to read from the audience. So I was hoping there might be a way that we can get a copy of the projection that you've put on the screen tonight.
We could certainly provide copies, but I think what we're going to also be doing, we kind of talked a little bit about this, is I think on the town of Yarmouth webpage, we're going to have a landing page, and I'm going to try and load up a bunch of this information. And then ultimately, what will happen is then there will be a link to the, to the GIS hub, and all of the information will be available that way. If you, if anyone ever needs a hard copy, we certainly go through plenty of toner and ink here. I've killed many trees. They weep when I walk by.
I've noticed.
We're more than happy to print out something for you, and I can certainly get that for you, Christine.
And the other thing I was going to say is, based on, you know, looking at the public participation in that, I think the outreach, there are a lot of neighborhood associations that have very, very different geographic areas within the town. A lot, I mean, there are beach associations, there's other associations. I always proudly say Hyannis Park Civic Association is the oldest continuously operational one on Cape Cod. And so we do tend to like to get public participation and share. So that as you get to that point, I think the outreach to neighborhood associations will be very, very important, too, just to make sure that they're within that process. Thank you.
Yes. If anyone has a neighborhood association, I have certain contact information for neighborhoods associations. Susan provided me with a bunch of additional ones. But if your neighborhood association has not been getting contacted, send me an email, kwilliams@yarmouthMA.us, and give me the contact information. I'll add you to the list, and you will be getting updates.
That's good, because I know that a lot of times, you know, people sort of talk about NIMBY and everything, but I actually happen to like NIMBY because basically those are the people who are living a day-to-day basis in a neighborhood, who know what the quality of life, the issues, and the other kinds of things of being there 24/7 are like, and really can quite often give very important feedback. You know, I mean, and I always listen carefully if someone's doing something out of Yarmouth Port and talking about their concerns from a neighborhood up there. I want to hear, because I think as I'm voting on something for the town of Yarmouth, you know, I want to know the implications and things. So that's why I think it's important to make sure we involve, you know, a lot of the neighborhood associations, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. I'm also working with IT. I think during the visioning process, some of you might have signed up for Constant Contact. We're looking into whether we should be continuing with that, or maybe there's something that we can do with our existing Civic Plus that we have. So ultimately, that will be on the website to let people know how to sign up so that you will get a direct email when we have some new information or there's a new meeting coming up. I think I have, like, 400 email addresses that I sent out. So there's, that's a great way to do it. We just need to find out the correct program to do that, whether we want to do Constant Contact or Civic Plus. But we'll get that information on the website as well. Anyone else from the public? Okay. Thank you so much for coming. Yes, I'm sorry.
Want to add one thing?
Sure.
It was talked about all the different elements that go into the plan, bringing in some of the existing work, the new work, new research and public input and new chapters that will be written. It sounds like a very, it is a very comprehensive report, as the name says. But part of what we do within the report is there is, as Heather talked about, an implementation kind of strategy. It's not just phases, but it's also who's responsible for what and what resources do they need to make sure they're successful and what they're responsible for. Because we don't like to do plans that sit on a shelf because nobody really knows where to go to get the resources to address a particular topic. So we will work with the community to make sure that everybody knows what they would be responsible for and they're comfortable with that. And if there are additional resources that are needed, the town knows that ahead of time before approving something and then wondering why something wasn't addressed. They need to know that other, certain actions may require additional resources.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate that. Okay. So Heather, Jeff, Olivia, thank you so much for coming this evening, and we look forward to working with you and seeing you again real soon.
Yep.
Thanks so much. Kathy, did you want to add anything else on this topic?
No, I think we're good.
Good. Great. Okay. We have meeting minutes from March 6. May I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes of March 6?
So moved.
Second.
We're going to start something new tonight. We're going to take a voice roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
We forgot how to do it.
Present, you can do it. So it's five zero.
All right. I was watching the select board meeting, I don't know, when, the one we were at last week, Kathy, for short-term rentals. And they're doing a voice vote. So I said, well, let's go there. If everyone's in person, I think technically you can do that. It's only if someone's remote. One of the planning board members are remote. Any committee updates?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes. Mr. Rubenstein?
Well, as you know, on the first Monday of the month, the Water Resources Advisory Committee has a gathering. And I guess I would say the wheels of sewer justice are starting to turn a little quicker. A little. Slowly, but more steadily. A little. Slowly, but more steadily. So, as you know, the DEP and the Town of Yarmouth set up a working group that's meeting every two weeks, and that has met for, I think, three or four months now. And the town administrator was at our meeting on Monday, and with, along with the consultants and with Jeff Colby, feel like we are making enough progress that by the end of May, so another seven-ish weeks, or another two or three working group meetings, that we'll be able to be in a position to finally get the Water Resource Recovery Facility, which I still don't really like saying, but I'm trying, finally get that in the process of being bid. And it's a lead towards an October 31st deadline of having the contract awarded, so that we can keep our $207 million beautiful interest-free pot of money. There. That's a long way of saying that. I will say, because of the amount of discharge and the ability of the facility to maybe not handle all of it, as we've previously discussed in other meetings, and the seek, you know, seeking out alternate sites, as we've already discussed, including at the golf course, as well as at the Route 6, Exit 8 interchange, I think it's fair to say, I'll just repeat this nicely for the nice people who might be watching, that there might be some additional costs to this beautiful project that may well take it beyond $207 million. Having said that, it is too early to tell what those costs are going to be, but we're on the road to more costs. And on slightly better news, as I'm sure those who live in the certain sections of town who have seen and heard and driven, or not being able to drive, work has begun. I guess we should also mention that. So, contracts two and three are underway. And yes, there will be some pause for, between Memorial Day and Labor Day, but not everywhere. So, I believe because of the state rules, that Route 28 work can't happen between Memorial Day and Labor Day. And there will be certain sections, especially the beach areas, where that'll be significantly limited. But other than that, the project will still continue right through the summer. And so, the good news is, I think the Yarmouth Police Department, and certainly the DPW in general, working with the new communications director, I think they're going to be pretty proactive about letting folks know, or to the best of their ability, about, as to the where and the when the construction will be happening. So, that's that. There's also, you know, coordination going on for each of the individual house, land, lot owners and parcel owners, whether they're commercial or residential, to talk to someone at DPW on behalf of the sewer project, in case there's questions about the location of a potential hookup and/or changing that location. So, I guess what I'm here to say is, there's been more good progress in the last 30 days. And I, you know, would like to share the town administrator's measured optimism, that we will be able to be in a very good place at the end of May.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Route 28 is getting dug up, and it's getting backed up. Thank goodness for Buck Island Road.
I think people are going to
Yeah, there's no back way anymore.
John to the miracle of Buck Island Road, if they hadn't already.
Can I just ask a question? Kathy, the study that the deputy administrator was doing on the, on Route 28, is he going to make a presentation to the planning board on that, or how was that?
He's not doing it. I mean,
It's under contract, but...
No, right now, we're working on the scope. So, I'm concerned we might be a little bit far, too far behind. We might have to start getting that going faster. But that's something that, yeah, I mean, it would be a part of, part of the process, would be communicating that information, and to CEDC, and probably to the Finance Committee, and all the, any other...
Is it going to be incorporated in the local comprehensive plan? Any part of that? Okay.
Any other committee updates?
Basically, I'm from the Capital Budget Committee. I think if you watched or were at the last select board meeting, that the plan was approved and is moving forward. So, there won't be any capital budget meetings now until, if someone will be in meeting, and then ramp it back up right after Labor Day.
Right. Thank you.
Madam Chair, could I throw in one more thing? I forgot to mention that Jeff Colby mentioned at our meeting that for those folks that get frustrated about the location of where the construction is happening, the town is putting all the, the most recent information through the Waze app, which is spelled W-A-Z-E. So, if you love Google Maps, that's nice, but that doesn't, the Google Maps may not be the most current in terms of where the actual construction is happening and how that might impact your driving through our town. So, and, and there will be a pretty big banner on the, on the town website that basically says, you know, sewer construction. And that'll be a nice place, I believe, also for some updates. But, but the Waze app is going to be the best way to get around town for those folks that, you know, despite their knowledge of all the nooks and crannies of our town, may run into some, some things they didn't expect if they don't check some of our more modern resources. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, can I ask this, will a question? Is that how they're communicating to the other towns down Cape? The only reason I say that is, I got stuck in the traffic yesterday, and while I was sitting there, what made it even better was a Dennis ambulance coming down 28. And that was a real barrel of fun for that poor ambulance driver.
I can imagine, yes. I know that the police and the fire departments have had coordinating conversations with DPW and the contractors, and with the other towns, because, yes, Yarmouth is right in the middle of, and also adjacent to, the hospital. So, yes, the conversations were had. I'm not sure what is going to, how that situation's going to improve, except that by, after Memorial Day, we'll just have lots of regular traffic for the ambulances and not the construction traffic yet. I don't know. I'm trying to make it, I'm trying to make it sound better. So.
Kathy, a question. The, the study, the marketing study, the CEDC's funding, so the scope hasn't been, that's far out, right? If we don't even have a scope for that yet?
There, there was a scope. I should have said request for proposals, because there was a scope that Bill compiled when he originally went to the CEDC asking for the, for the money. And he did the diff with it, and I think he got some grant writing money. And then the other thing was the marketing study. I think we'll probably need to come back to CEDC, because I think we might need a little bit more money for the marketing study to see if they'd be amenable to that. But that scope's kind of written, and I know that Bill was working on, on, you know, trying to get cost proposals for that. Where it stands right now, I don't know.
Kathy, there was, there was a scope written, because I was on the CDC when it was presented. I think, as you said, I think now it's in the RFP stage of developing that.
Yeah. So, if I'm hearing you, Peter, he hasn't been back to the committee?
I don't believe, I, I, I don't believe so, no.
He, he hasn't done anything beyond that. And I think this might be a case where this is kind of where we work hand-in-hand with Bill and come back to CEDC, because it's so important and integral to the local comprehensive plan, of kind of saying, we really would like to have this marketing study. This is what we think it's going to cost. And then going out for proposals for that. I think in talking with Bill, that there's really like, two, two very different tasks that are being asked here. The marketing study is more the data crunching. And then the, the community planning grant, looking at mixed use, that's a different kind of group that might be looking at that. So, they're really two separate studies that would be done by two different groups, but both giving really good information that would then feed into, and trying to answer in some way, you know, Susan's question of, you know, the marketing study, what, what kind of businesses do we need, and how can we draw them here, and will they be serving these year-round needs that we have? I think we always need to expand our year, our year-round economy. And I think we've been doing some good work with tourism with regard to shoulder seasons, but I don't think that we can ever rely solely on that. I think it'd be great to have other opportunities. But it's very difficult to have a payable wage that would be able to support buying a house at the prices now. You know, if it's $600,000 home, you need to make $200,000 as a family in order to be able to, to afford.
As Susan commented, unless Cape Cod becomes Vegas of the East, you can't rely on tourism 12 months a year. After working it for as many years as I did, yes, the town has done a great job trying to push the shoulder seasons, and we all know what June, July, and August bring. You can't support a family on three months a year. So.
That's a little bit offbeat, but, and maybe we're jumping the seasons. Was there ever any follow-up on the food truck thing last, remember, we authorized food trucks to be able, did anyone ever do any kind of a summary? Was it successful? Was it not successful? Should we have, should we, did they need to come back to get, was it a permanent author, was it a permanent zoning change? Okay. I was just wondering if that had ever, everyone was sort of very enthusiastic about it, and then I didn't hear anything afterwards, whether it turned out to be a successful enterprise or not.
I think that what you guys had, had authorized was, if you want to do a food truck, like in the B2 where restaurants are allowed, it's already in allowed use. It was when people wanted to do food trucks at, like, the beaches, which are in residential zoning districts, where restaurants aren't allowed. And it kind of came about because they couldn't find anybody to do the concession stands at, I think, Parker's River and, and Smugglers. I think they have been finding people willing to do that, but still having that opportunity out there is, is still good. I just don't know how many people have had to, have actually had.
Because I think Falmouth, there's a big food truck festival sometime at the beginning of the summer, maybe in June.
They're doing it at the fairgrounds, right.
Is that what it is?
It's a fairground event.
But I was thinking more in terms of the, you know, drive-in site, if we could ultimately do something like that at the drive-in site. If they do this in the spring, maybe we could do a fall.
That'd be fun.
Yeah, that'd be terrific.
You can walk off the food truck on the, on the boardwalk.
It'd be a lot easier to drive.
I've been Falmouth.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. Any other committee updates? I just have a brief one. The Preservation Committee presented our articles to the Board of Select, Select Board. And as far as we know, they're all okay. There were some questions asked, some last-minute changes. The new Finance Director has suggested some language changes, which were good. So, those four, I think there are four articles. No, two articles, but they have three, three, one has three components.
Yeah, one of them is moving the money around, digging the 10%, 10%, 10%.
And then there's the individual projects.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. So, that, it looks like that's a good go for, for town meeting. That's all I have. Anything else on that? Any other board member items or correspondence? Kathy, you need to, no, okay? We're good?
I have some, some updates.
We want to run through our next meetings?
Um, I don't have anything specifically for the agenda item for April 17th. I don't know if you guys wanted to meet for, preparing for annual town meeting. I think that's pretty basic. I would maybe like to expand the explanation a little bit. I believe Susan's going to be presenting it. Just to talk a little bit about the, the study. We say that we were extending time for the short-term rental sunset clause to do additional studies. In the presentation, I think it's helpful when we said, oh, and the study that we're doing is Affordable Housing Trust has authorized $50,000. I did send that scope off to Joanne, because they're looking for that. So, maybe just clarifying that we are moving forward with some, with some specific studies. I'm trying to get some update from, from Mary on that. I believe the Affordable Housing Trust is meeting on the 16th. We might have some additional information on that. And then I can't remember who asked the question. Maybe it was Will that said, and if we vote this down, what does that actually mean? It means, maybe it was Jim, it means no short-term rentals for next summer if, if we don't address this. So, that's, that's a big...
Which I think would be important to
Which would be a very important thing to bring home.
Mention at town meeting.
So, we might want to expand just a little bit the explanation with a couple more sentences to kind of talk about those, those two things. But that's something that I can work with Joanne and Susan on, and just make those changes. And of course, we have the Annual Town Meeting on April 30th. I would also like to maybe work up some postcards and to hand them out to people, talking about the local comprehensive plan, you know, maybe the link to the town landing page, depending on how far they are with the hub that they're creating, maybe directing people there. So, then we could just kind of get, start getting the words out to people, that the LCP is starting back up again, and this is where to go for all the great information.
Kathy, is the meeting going to be at the new school?
Yes.
Understanding, yes. Okay. Yep. I think they're on top of it this year. It was hard, the very first time. But, but May 1st, I think we're going to have a, I know we're going to have a VCOD Site Plan Review for 811 Route 28. That's in VC2, and it's for eight residential units.
Whereabouts is that, Kathy?
Uh, it's just kind of like across the street from, it's on the south side from Silver Cloud, the, the, the storage garage that they have there. They're right next to Silver Cloud, to the east of them. There's like Annie's, there was like an Annie's
It was a gift shop there.
Shop there that, that...
That's where they want to put it.
It's next door to that.
Oh, it's next door to that?
Yeah, Marie, yeah, Marie Karen bought that, and I think they're doing something there. But it's the next property over. I think there's a house way, way in the back.
Right.
So, is it going to be, how many residential units?
Eight.
Eight? Single-family, or?
Um, no, there's going to be four townhouses, and four townhouses, and then in the middle there'll be like a shared laundry room.
I should know the answer to this, but I don't, I don't think I do. Has that project gone before design review yet?
It's going to Site Plan Review.
Site Plan Review.
Well, it's going to Site Plan Review on, on the 16th, and then it's going to Design Review on the
What month?
I'm sorry, April.
April.
And then the, going to the Design Review Committee on April 23rd, and then coming before you guys. It's not a public hearing, it's just a public meeting on May 1st. So, you'll have input from Site Plan Review and from the Design Review Committee before it gets to you.
Okay. With the absence of Chris Vincent, I presume he's not attending those?
He, I called him specifically, and he said he was going to attend it, because if he doesn't attend it, I don't have quorum for that day.
Okay.
The first?
The 23rd.
The 23rd.
Yep.
And that's Design Review?
That's for the Design Review Committee, correct.
And had he indicated, I mean, not that any of us could go and vote, but just having a presence there, I think, is important. He had indicated he
He'd indicated he was going to attend.
Great.
Yep. And I will call him that day, because we definitely need him.
And it would be, I think, helpful if he could attend our May 1st meeting, when we're reviewing it as well.
Yes, good point. Very good point.
Okay, great.
Good point.
Okay. Thank you.
And then we may also, it's kind of in the works, have, have a road project for a mixed-use development. That's still in the early stages. Nothing's been submitted, but they did go through, through Site Plan Review.
What's the address on that?
Um, it's the old Tasty Buffet property.
Old what?
Tasty Buffet property at 228
Up on 28, Chinese East.
The vacant lot. The vacant lot, yeah.
Chinese East, you're dating yourself.
Because that was, last year, that was, they were trying to make that into a go-kart track?
Yes.
Something that didn't quite happen?
Yeah, the zoning said no.
What type of project are they?
It's a mixed-use project. So, it's interesting.
Good.
Mixed use is good.
Yep. Top-of-shop housing. So, it would be very interesting.
Susan, we can agree to disagree.
What's that?
Nothing.
They were, a universal mixed use is always good. That's not always true.
I didn't say always, Susan. Thank you.
We didn't say always. We just said, it's better than a vacant lot.
Intimate it always.
Okay, Susan.
That's fair. That's a fair statement.
In other news, I'm glad to see that the two gas stations on Station Ave, those pumps have been turned off. That made me very happy.
What's this?
The Shell and the Sunoco.
The other gas stations are now offline.
Sunoco, Sunoco.
In place of our beautiful, brand-new gas station.
I did see somebody there trying to pump gas yesterday.
You did?
She drove over the cones.
Oh, no.
Are you serious? Oh, my God.
They were trying to do it.
Habits die hard. Is that what you're saying?
Probably yelling at somebody.
The entrance. She must have went right over the cones.
How long do they have to decommission that station, the Shell?
I thought it was longer ti, I think they had to stop the, the gas
Right.
Very quickly, but then the service, I think he had a little bit longer time with the service. There's some, there's been a lot of ideas about that parcel and the parcel next door to it.
Specifically speaking of the old, the old Shell station, I thought that they had
Oh, the Shell station has the nitrogen mitigation on it.
Right.
But I don't know whether they're going to try and find another property and switch it, switch it out. So.
But it's the Sunoco on the corner.
Sunoco on the corner is the one that has the service. That's my understanding. There's a certain time period with which that has to be phased out.
Okay.
Because I get my car down there, so it's all about me.
Okay. Anything else, Kathy?
Nope. I think that's kind of it.
So, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I like, I like doing it that way.